They're using it to stiffen the shoulders, to make them where they're not soft. They have a choice of using lime rock or clay, and clay was cheaper. We'll see how it goes.
What are they happening, yeah?
Looks like we're in there. That joint, the first joint, all the way to the head. The end one isn't messed up, it's very much the next one is carved like that. But it's pretty solid. Scientists want. We made a cage. I had them. And the cover at the top. And it was two busted out sections on the bottom. Had to stick three bars in that, come all the way out tight to the cage. So hopefully I'll tie it. Our inspector come up there, I asked him what was going on. He said, "Actually, we play some Miss Landings today." Hopefully, I mean, it'll hard enough tomorrow. My turn, he noted today. Now, I'll try to tell Kevin to make sure that he helps keep the greater baseball. Just to let his play go on wide.
Father, we thank you right now for this hour, we thank this hour for the mission. We bless your name because your name worthy to be blessed. We ask you right now, Father, as we delve into the kind of business you will guide us and lead us, and hope that everyone would hear, hear something that they can take away. Thank you now for what you're going to do, we thank you for what you've done thus far. And we bless your holy name. Father, we do come praying for war rushing and Ukraine right now in a mighty way. We pray for those in this country with all respect and all aspect. You know you know all about it, it didn't get you busted, right? Yes, we ask right now, we bless your name in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My dear Lord, everyone, to our meeting this Monday, August 7th, 1:23 at 6:00 p.m. We have a conference line set up, the number there is 1-917-900-1022. The access code is 32347 now. This is not a toll-free number, you may be subject to long distance, 42 long distance. The chairperson spoke in the meeting from public comment, please follow the little address. You wish to speak, please dial star five, the moderator will unmute your lines when it's your turn to speak, and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes to speak. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. And that said, I'd ask the board, you know, we, out of number 23, can we move it up? There's several folks here traveling distance, medical field, travel home, so if we can move it up right under number 16, after number 16, does that? Yeah, move that to number three, and I'll ask for an approval of the amended agenda.
Motion to a third.
Yeah. A motion and a second to approve the amended agenda, all in favor? Moving on the consent items, everyone have a chance to look over your consent items? Any discussion, any questions? I have a motion to approve your consent items.
Okay.
Business of the hearing, 12, the board to hold a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter is possible to consider the purchase of property from Mrs. Ed Shaw and budget transfer from MSTU fund reserves for purchase.
Before we begin the budget, excuse me, the public hearing, I would like to make a correction on the fiscal impact. It is actually $11,467.70, I apologize for that, I was not paying attention. Because the legal fees are $1,467.70. The purchase price is $10,000. And as you recall, the board just on June 20th approved a road closing petition for the actual exchange, and this is the public hearing to execute the option to purchase agreement. So after this is complete, then we will schedule a closing through Curtis Law Firm, which will probably take place hopefully next week. The clerk's office will go ahead and find and issue a check this week, and we'll have everything written for closing as soon as possible.
So this is a public hearing, I want to say before we open it up to the public, this hearing is based on the county acquiring some land for the Shady Grove Fire Department for a future enhancement for the fire station in order to have staff firefighters there. So I'll open it up to the public at this time. Any comment from the public? Do we have anybody on the line that would like to speak? All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we live with this.
I'll close the hearing at this time, and this, I'd give it to the, open it up to the board. Any discussion, any comments from the board?
I have one question. In the beginning, weren't we going to trade some land to buy some?
Well, what it is, we did do a trade. We are doing a trade, but then this was the additional property between their house and the fire station, which is needed, have to have it in order to build a fire station. So at that time, Mr. Shaw offered this to us at a lower price than what he had been offered for the property. So this will give us enough of property to build the firehouse, and then if we decide in the future that we want to add some kind of addition or something to it, so that maybe the constitutional officers would have a little office space if they wanted to, you know, maybe have a presence up there, they don't need or whatever.
Right. I think that's what we'll do. I'm glad we were able to acquire, when the price of land, they were going to bring in 10 dollars. I was, it sounded like it's going pretty good, that sounds good, the money issue. I'm bought.
No other discussion, we have a motion on the table to approve the purchase of property. We have a second?
Back.
We have a second, all in favor? 13, the board to hold the first of two public hearings set for this date at 6:05.
Mr. Chairperson, I'm sorry, I'll also need approval to transfer funds from MSTU fund reserves for the purchase.
We have a motion to, uh?
I'm moved.
With motion and a second to transfer the funds, all in favor?
Thank you.
13, the board to hold the first of two public hearings set for this date at 6:05 p.m. or soon thereafter is possible to receive public input for the possible grant submission to the 2024-2025 funding cycle under Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, FORDAP, program requesting funding assistance for Phase Two of the rehabilitation of Southside Park, attended by Grant Rutter, Melody Cox. Melody, you there?
Hey, everybody, yeah, can y'all hear me?
Of course.
Okay. This is our first of two public hearings to apply for the upcoming funding cycle of the FORDAC agreement. The funding cycle just opened and has a deadline on August 31st, and our second public hearing will be at the next meeting. We had previous weeks just submitting applications for another phase of Southside Park with the primary focus being on constructing a new pickleball court. That will be your primary expense, it has an estimated cost of about $28,000. And then we will submit application, the remainder of the application for support facilities around it. We thought we would do a small picnic area over by it because that's a big point on the grant, parking improvements, security lighting, and we are going to include a small nature study area because that gives you about 10 additional points on the grant application, too. We thought we would keep the application at $50,000 because there has been numerous times over the years that the only project that's been funded is a $50,000 project. We kind of anticipate a maybe strange year next year with it being in the last year, so we wanted to make sure we were in a good place applying in the $50,000 pot, and then our second application we know will be in the $200,000 pot.
Got it, got it. Thank you, uh? Go ahead. Melody, that, that pickleball court is, this is a new court, is that correct? It's not any recent, something existing?
That's correct, it will be a brand new court. We have contacted, while we're discussing pickleball, we have contacted FORDAP on added lines to the basketball court at Southside Park. At this time, I just wanted to tell you, we have had a lot of trouble getting any answers from FORDAP because there's been so much staff turnover there, but I do know that they're doing temporary tapestry, striping out there right now so that they can play some pickleball, but this will be a brand new court and facility.
Is that concrete asphalt, what surface do we expect?
The quote, Danny and Quinn helped us put together a quote, and we did it in-house, and that was for concrete.
Is that, is that to include areas for multiple courts? Do we have any idea about that size in this public project?
Yeah, we have, I still have the site right here with me, but we did get regulation sites and the support outside the regulation site, how much they were recommending, and their insufficient space, we do know that, for, for an actual regulation site court.
But just one court?
No, there's two.
Two courts?
Yeah.
And remember, we still plan to resurface the old racquetball courts.
Do you remember which place that may generate, or how many courts?
I hope, that's going to be, did we figure out if we could get one or two courts out of that area? Kenneth, do you remember?
No, I'm sorry, but I was just caught my surprise, I didn't know we were going to redo those to provide any court surfaces because they are eight inches difference in height.
So we would have to resurface them?
We were going to salvage one of those, I thought, for a picnic type area, but it was going to construct two new courts. That's at least my conversations with Jamie, I thought.
If, if we received the grant funding, then we can do that, right?
So only two additional courts?
Not only, but two addition, two new courts out there, yes, sir. Plus, if they give permissions through FORDAP not to have any impact on the previous funding, you can have at least two additional courts available on the basketball surface.
Does it have to be time to go by before you can modify that, to give them the right department?
I expect there's a time obligation for not altering anything that they paid for, but I don't know that it is, Melody, I'm sure it is, I'll say.
And, and we've asked, we're just waiting for a response.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing in reference to Southside Park. I think there are value, notice the walls, those walls, the racquetball walls have come down, so there's enhancements being made to the park, so pickleball and some other things. So this is a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public.
I will just say that along those same lines, the wall's being removed, yes, that's part of some of the recent improvements, but court surface itself was a tremendous improvement. There's landscaping that's been done, new sidewalks, new parking lot stripings, repair of the playground equipment, repainting some of the swing sets, replacement of chains and seats, the mulch underneath the fitness or the playground equipment. So there, there's been a huge amount of investment over the last year, percent out there.
I agree, I just mentioned this wall because we probably stopped the live problems going on out there.
And it was getting to the point that it was structurally unsafe.
Public hearing, anyone from the public?
Yes. These courts are intended as 100% public use? Is there any consideration by the county administration if these, if there is a pickleball league that is started about how to police the use of that for people who are not part of the organization?
Yeah, they would. We've heard, I've heard of a league before, and I've heard of one, I just keep doing this. I've heard of different groups starting a league, and I don't know if that would be good for the dusting or if it's something that...
Right now, all of our courts are first come, first served, so I know that there's a lot of competition at the sports complex for, for court space, which is why one of the groups wanted to move to Southside and just put tape down and use temporary nets until we could get all this sorted out as far as the FORDAP grant comes. But currently, we don't restrict any use of the properties for one group over the other. It's, it's first come, first served, unless it's something like reserving baseball fields at the sports complex.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, we will close the public hearing, open it up to the board, any discussion from the board?
We'll have to have a second public hearing, correct, Melody?
Yes, the second public hearing will be at the next board meeting, and for Southside Park, it will be at 6 o'clock p.m.
All right. We'll go on to the next item, 14. All right, the board to hold the first of two public hearings set for this date at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter is possible to receive public input for the possible grant submission to the 2024-2025 funding cycle of the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, FORDAP, requesting funding assistance for the rehabilitation and improvement to Taylor County Horsemen's Arena located at Forest Capital Hall, headed by Grant Rutter. Melody?
Well, I got to, I got to tell y'all, I had a lot of concern on this grant because of how the FORDAP grant works. But, and we had contacted the FORDAP people to ask them some questions on the court system for the arena itself. The new application was just released, and, and I've got to say, I called Lwanda like dreaming with excitement this afternoon because of some of the rule changes this year with the grant. There are 10 districts, recreational districts in Florida, and you get coins for priorities in your district, and we were, have been very concerned about that. And for the first time since I've been doing the FORDAP grant, which is 22 years, course back, it's moved into our division. So I'll tell you why we were, I was going crazy. Good thing I'm not there tonight because I'd be praising around right now. Also, we have the idea that also what's moved into our category was RB hookups, which is a big point on the grant, so we thought maybe we could do a couple RB hookups out there as part of our improvements, which could sell concessions, or, you know, tabs, or any number of things when we have events out there. So that would help us a lot, too, but we think we've come up with a good game plan on how to do a really good grant on this. Danny and Quinn was out there with Jamie today to do some measuring, but we're, we're working really hard to make this a really strong grant. I had spoken to Lwanda about eventually calling it not just the Horsemen's Arena, but an exhibition center or something along that line to help with other funding sources. But right now, we'll leave it, you know, just Taylor County Horsemen's Arena. So some of the rule changes this year have definitely worked in our favor. And I, I think we'll be pursuing the $200,000 grant, that category for this, to do a lot of the things that we already done, the arena surfacing. That will offer enough opportunities for us to go to other funding sources to apply for that covering. I know Lwanda has voted the chamber, and there seems to be some support there, but I think, I think we can come up with a really, really strong grant in the day on this. We also are able to request a waiver of match, so we can still go for the $200,000 and not worry about, you know, county money at this time. I think, you know, doing a legislative request, because it has an economic impact, and looking at the Department of Ad grants that have some matches, but I think it's a strong FORDAP grant, if y'all are figuring it forward with us.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing as well, this is, in reference to the rehabilitating the Horsemen's Arena out at the Forest Capital Hall. Anyone from the public? Anyone on the line? I'll close the public hearing on this now, we have any discussion from the board?
Yes, another question. Will we proceed having any events like rodeos there? Or describe the kind of events that you think that will happen there?
I mean, I think it might be livestock show just now, that's what I was, I thought the board discussed that.
Sir, can you?
I thought the board discussed the potential for the enhancements.
Maybe you did, but I might not have been here, so if you don't mind me asking?
Certainly, no, I mean, we were talking about livestock events and certainly horse shows and things of that magnitude, that's what I thought.
And, and, right, and if we get to where we can have a covered arena, we can definitely have numerous types of livestock shows, cattle shows, big shows, lamb, goat. I mean, they're all, you know, the show world is really big business anymore, but it would definitely open you up for regular horse shows and, you know, more of your livestock rodeo type events. I had discussed with Lwanda maybe lengthening the arena where it's a better regulation site. And at some point, we need to kind of address a different type of alleyway because we need a longer alleyway if you want to bring in, like, some of your better barrel racing shows. There is a lot of opportunity there, I had discussed with Lwanda, the railings ring out there that you use to warm up your horses, that horse show, making some improvements to that because that surface is not really usable. I've talked with several people about the services, purposes. I think y'all know that I race and show horses, so, you know, this is really, I wouldn't want to see something happen there, but when I was there riding in the arena all the time, I didn't address it because I didn't want anybody to ever think it is personal, but I think it's just a really exciting opportunity for Taylor County. You have a lot of people that ride in that area, you have a lot of people that barrel race, but as I said earlier, you have a lot of people that show cattle and other livestock, so it's, it's a great opportunity for us to bring in, you know, multiple day events, just like you do at the sports complex.
Okay, so, Lwanda, who, who would manage this operation? Who would be in charge of this, would it be your, I mean, Rex Department? I mean, our, our parks and recreation or?
I think it would depend on, on how all of this unfolds. When I had a conversation with the chamber, there was interest in not, in trying not to limit any of the improvements to livestock or, or any other type of shows, but to utilize that area maybe as an outdoor, outdoor exhibition location. So I think it would depend on how all of this unfolds, whether or not we could partner with the chamber, perhaps, or, you know, if it is a tourist destination. I mean, there's, there is a lot more conversation to be had, although the first step would be, you know, to address some of the issues with, with the arena. But I think that in the past, that was managed by, by the folks at Forest Capital Hall, by our extension agent, and, and if, if it's limited to livestock shows, I think that would be fairly simple, but if we want to open that up for some type of exhibition area, then it would be, I think it would be much bigger than that.
And the reason that I ask is I'm thinking of the tournaments that we've had, and how much work and how much preparation and how much time, staff time goes into that.
You're absolutely correct.
So I'm trying to see the same kind of thing happening.
So I would say... So I would say, you know, if this comes to fruition, which could take, you know, years, honestly, that, that is definitely something that we would have to explore. If it's used occasionally for, you know, a show here and there or for four H, I think it's easier to manage. But if we open it up to multiple use, potential uses, then yes, that, that's something that we, we need to think about, absolutely.
I, I would like to see it come to fruition. I think that it's something that would be good for our county. It would also give our youth more things to do and other people too. So I'm all in support of it, sir.
You're absolutely correct as far as managing the operation, yes.
Thank you.
This would be, I've talked to several folks within the county that young kids from four years old to eighteen years old, they travel every weekend. Bull riding. And it was the younger ones are riding sheep like mountain, mountain, but they, they go every weekend. And they had shown interest to get that, the arena out there rehabilitated and potentially hold these type events there as well. So I think the idea is not to, is to get it rehabilitated just for use, you know, bleachers and restaurant facilities, their sound systems such as that, and redo the insides of the arena itself, the groundwork and also, I think, after initial, the path that we're heading down. And then if we're able to cover it at some point, then we definitely could move on to cover it as well.
And if you do a covering, you could host, you know, all kinds. You could even do your, you know, concerts in there. I mean, there's so many opportunities other than just, you know, livestock and horse shows. With a covered arena, you know, you have unlimited opportunities. And Ms. Tam, if there are horse shows, of course, the county would be responsible for the maintenance and reserving that date. But organizations that put on those events do all the, like, scheduling and outside of that, like what, as far as the timing and what goes on. So other than reserving the arena and making sure to maintain your association that hosts that event would be responsible for everything event-wise going on that day.
I'll, I'll have a lot of questions later on.
All right, we're here. No discussion, I don't need anything to move on. Here, uh, move on down. Fifteen, the board received bids for the salt pine, tomato berries, gendered by Lillanda.
The bid committee for this project will be myself, Lori Wiggins, and Marsha Durden. We did receive two bids. The first one is with B F C harvesting out of, in Macaulay, Florida. I found that one practicing. Thirty percent of the gross sales.
That's thirty. It's in red.
You said thirty percent?
Yes, sir, your honor. I said, your honor. Hey, how about that, Jennifer?
Thirty percent of the gross sales. And that was from two. Mucko, Florida.
B F C harvesting.
Yes.
It does not have a name on it. This one is J H Backhoe and Tractor Services here in Perry. And their bid is fifteen percent of the gross weight. So the bid committee will review all the documents and bring a recommendation back to the board.
All right. We're moving on to public request. Brian Johnson to discuss property flooding and the unified property owners located on East Ellison Road.
I did have a printout with my submission and I did bring copies of that. I'll provide that to the administrators.
Yep.
They have.
We have, before we have.
Right.
It is, that's correct. This, okay. Anybody, anyone? So I want to thank the administrators, the commissioners, excuse me. I thank the commissioners for coming out and looking at our property after the last meeting we had. Mr. Demp, I appreciate you coming. And also, Mr. Newman, you'll have to forgive me if, if other commissioners came. I'm not there all the time, so if you did come by, I appreciate that. I appreciate the attention that's been given to the, the situation thus far. Looking back at the history on it, so I had submitted this submission to come speak to you tonight on the twenty-fifth. At the time, I had written that since July the sixteenth, water level has not proceeded significantly and remains a threat of entering to our home. That is, we're very pleased at the fact that we've not had a lot of rain. We've not had a lot of other impacts. And, you know, the water has greatly receded. So we do have access to our home now just through evaporation and, and into the groundwater. It is still impactful to our neighbors and other residents. I did make two requests. So one request I had was a written report of chronological order of all, in chronological order of all residential complaints and activities taken by the county commissioners, county administrator, county administrator assistant, county engineer, and county public works office regarding any work related to East Ellison Road from January twenty, two thousand twelve to July sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The office has contacted me and offered that. I apologize, I've not been able to get back about the format of that data. So I do want to recognize that I made a request and there was action taken on that request. I do appreciate that and we'll complete that. I also request Taylor County schedule a public workshop for property owners of East Ellison Road, county administrator, public work staff engineer, Swanee Water Management District, and representatives Army Corps of Engineers to review the source of overflow flooding. There seems to be a lot of discussion amongst individuals. And I just asked if you'd bring that forward in a public forum as a workshop so that we're able to facilitate meeting people in the same room together to talk about what the issue is. So those were my two, two requests, I guess. In the handout that I gave you, that you have a copy of, on page one, you're looking at, at my property and also the neighbor's property there. You're seeing how close the water became. On page two, this is a separate view of that water. And if you'll excuse me just a moment. So, um, page two is another view of my particular property. And it also shows how the water had overflowed from the neighboring property on the near side of the photo. Page three shows the aerial from the west looking east. And so you really get an idea of the, the total water coverage. Later on, you'll see an image here that they did on Google Earth that shows the total coverage was about seven and a half acres of water. Now, prior to July the sixteenth, this area was dry. The rainy event that we had, after that rainy event had fallen, we did not have any standing water. It wasn't until after overflow from neighboring properties did we have water for our property. Again, page four, this is showing the impact to this cross property behind me here. She is still not able to use her driveway. And then we have other alternate views. Going forth to page six, if the beer bottom side, left-hand side, you really see how the water overflowed from the neighbor's property. And then on page seven, we basically show that the water has come from a property, I believe it's owned by Mr. Hunt. This is a cow pasture here on page seven. Page eight is again primarily showing the impact to Mr. Dick Jarvis and his family. Page nine again shows that. Page ten is from East Ellison Road looking north. I think one thing important to point out here are the number of dead trees. So trees typically do not live in standing water. So you can see that this has been a change by the very fact that living trees are now dead. They've been standing in water long enough to kill them. Before that, we did not have this issue. So the trees did not succumb and die just because of the rain we've had this year. Going forward to page twelve, this is again on, this is east looking west. You see what would naturally be a scene for a pond. And then page thirteen, you're able to really point out and see how the water has, has come from the pasture. I call out on East Ellison Road, you can see on the south side of the road and north side of the road, both of those ditches indicate that you've got water flow in them. However, that once you get past the culvert under the road, there is no water flow. Again, on page fifteen, this is another example of, of where we suspect the water flow comes from. It's being fed from down to the ditches of the county road. Given I'm not sure it's a state road, but up into the point or reaches of culvert and then it hits the low spot and passes from the south side of the road back to the north side of the road. Page sixteen is just other views of that. Page seventeen shows how the water has approached across the pasture and onto the neighboring land. And then page eighteen completes what most of the views are, which is the water view, the total impact looking east. What would be page nineteen shows East Ellison Road based on July the twentieth. What it is, it went in and did an overlay of all the impacted water. The white area that you see circle, which approaches on my property, is seven and a quarter acres. The red encroachment, which is on a neighboring property, is approximately twelve acres. And the blue encroachment is about two and a half acres on the, on the cow pasture there. In the second handout you have, went to public documentation. This is basically Google Earth where they have historical photos. And so what I was able to do is just take what would be public record and show, you know, what the landscape has been since nineteen ninety-four. So the last update was two thousand seventeen. We don't have any data available to me at that point. But it does show the, the change in landscape. And to me, there's been very little change to the landscape as far as land clearing in the immediate area or, you know, development of structure. Of course, there has been structure at the, at the chicken farm there. And we do not have a, a more recent photo. There's actually been a little bit more development that's not evident in here. I think one of the things that you can point out from this is that, you know, we do see periods of drought, we do see periods of rain. However, you know, throughout this timeframe, even though there can be multiple month gaps here, we don't see anything that overflows or moves along the property the way we have observed in the last two months. Is there any questions about what I presented or what you're looking at? Any questions?
I got a question. So you're saying the water came from the east and hit northeast, come into the pasture, then flowed over into the ditch, the new ditch, and went west down to your property, is what you're saying?
No, sir. I'm saying that the water overflowed from the northeast under the road and along the south boundary of the road until it reached the next low point drain, to which point it turned to north, crossed under the road into the cow pasture, across two prop, three property owners onto my property.
Okay. You're exactly right. For the last time I flooded out there, the east end was flooded and the, and the west end wasn't.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And in other words, what you're actually saying is the ditch is what's inverted the water to the, to the lowest point in the neighborhood.
If it comes to rain and we have flood, you can chase the current and back to the source. And it is, we are agreeing.
I looked at it a lot. I went out there and see the whole situation and looked at it. And I remember last time when it was flooded, I looked at it then. And the time before it flooded, I looked at it. But really, you're saying the only thing changed in the neighborhood is the ditch along the new pavement.
It appears that way, yes. Outside of, you know, what I'm able to look at, you know, I cannot comment if there's any other changes. And I recognize that all of this is natural drainage. I, I see no designated structure for drainage in this area or really around Taylor County within the city limits. Yes, I see canals, I see drainage within the city limits, but I really don't see designated drainage in the county areas. And, you know, looking at this and kind of studying the topological maps, it would appear that one of the natural overflows from San Pedro Bay would be Spring Creek. Spring Creek runs adjacent to these properties. So I recognize that property owner may decide they want to build a duck pond. It's their, it's their rights. There could be a, a natural impediment that has stopped up Spring Creek that's causing this overflow. Again, it's public, it's private land. So, you know, just like my land, I can dig a ditch if I want to. You're welcome to do the same on your own. So I'm not, I'm not calling out other landowners in suspicion. I just know what the overall impact here is.
Well, the last time the water came in on the east end, the county got out there and we dug a ditch, the Spring Creek, where that water would go on the south of the Spring Creek.
Yes, sir.
It wouldn't come under the road through the culvert and come, you know, toward the pasture over there on Mr. Hunt's property.
Yes, sir.
So, but this time the ditch wasn't there. We had already filled the ditch in.
Yes, sir.
Because the landowners weren't to fill in.
Yes, sir.
So we filled it in. So the water didn't have nowhere to go but into that ditch on the side of the highway and go to the lowest point in the neighborhood and that was toward your property.
Yes, sir. And, and in my last addressment of the county commissioners, you know, I fully admit that, you know, most of my, some of my property is. most of my, some of my property is in a puddle. And there is no drain for it.
You're looking through the whole neighborhood. Your area is some of the lowest, the field by Dix House and your house, some of the lowest in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
But what I'm getting to is there was a bayou without that ditch that we dug on the east end to let that water get, go on into Spring Creek. When it was filled in, it put all that water, you can, you can ride down into Stellis and then look east. Your area, east of your area is higher, you know, than your area.
Yes, sir.
You can see it. The water used to go up there coming out of the base, and then it went into our ditch and went into Spring Creek.
Yes, sir.
I've looked at both places, from the dry and wet, I've seen what the ditch did. What would you suggest how to solve this problem?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to recognize that it's been a longstanding issue, as you pointed out. I'd like to recognize that it's impacted not only myself, but multiple property owners. And it's impacted property owners much worse than it has myself. So I'm not here necessarily to represent the issues. I want something done for me. What I'm asking for is action by the county to solve the problem for all the property owners. And I recognize that that's a difficult situation. I recognize that the community of Steen Hachy has had flooding, and many, many property owners across Taylor County have experienced flooding. It's not just our neighborhood, not just our road. I've offered to Ms. Pam, I'm sorry, Ms. Pemberton, that, you know, there is grant money, and we have promised that the Corps of Engineers is coming up with a plan. That money should be designated to the highest risk and highest impact. That may not be on my road. So I fully support that. And I fully support county administrator and also the commissioners, that whenever that plan comes out and that money gets designated and gets spent and it's time for more, I as a citizen, and I'm willing to go out and partition whoever I need to, to help get more, so we solve the problems for the citizens of Taylor County. Now, granted, I do want my issues fixed, but this is not solely about me. So you ask, what would I do about this? I do believe that a diversion would work. I recognize that that's private property, and some agreement has to be made. This is the reason why I'm asking for the workshop, where to get private citizens together to hear what potential solutions would be and the impacts. And it should be, it should be property owners, neighbors talking with each other, not necessarily just county commissioners or administrators facilitating that. There needs to be some recognition amongst each other here of what these impacts are. You know, I recognize that the impacts on me have been, so far, about a month, whereas other people on the east end have had impacts for years.
There's a way to fix it. It's just got to get the water channel to Spring Creek. I mean, it's just, it's going to have to go proper, out of problem and get to Spring Creek.
And I recognize that there's a potential that once that plan becomes enacted, there's a potential for environmental impact studies and other things that may become barriers to this. So what I've offered, Ms. Pemberton, is, you know, we are citizens, we have a voice. If it means that we can call the county, the state representative and ask for assistance with the Corps of Engineers to move this project forward, you know, please let us know. We can be advocates here too. So I'd like to close with that.
I wrote out the day after you were here, and I mean, obviously, there is a lot of water. You don't realize it, can you go see just what it's really there? I mean, it's definitely an issue, so I was going to ask you a miracle, I mean, to put you on the spot, but I know you got to answer. But we redone that road out there. Did we, when we redone that road, did we surface this road, Ellison Road? Did we change any of the drainage at all?
There are no new culverts put underneath that road since that road was constructed by the state in somewhere around 1970.
They put a new culvert on my driveway.
There are no new culverts. So the question you asked me, is there any new ones put under the road? We're not talking about driveways. We're talking about culverts under the road. There are no new culverts under that road since it was constructed by the state in and around 1970.
Yeah, good.
None of them were changed. The flow direction is the same.
Do you want to come up and say something, Mr. Jarvis?
I'd like to give you a preview of what's happened, you know, in the past.
No, no, I'm fine. Mr. Jarvis, give me one second. So, I guess the only other thing that I would say, I had a note here, you know, my last contact with Ms. Pemberton was on July the 26th. She called me by phone, had a good conversation. I offered, you know, to contact the representative, you know, to use the voice of the citizens. And at that time, we did discuss that the previous weekend, we did have heavy rains. She expressed the county public works coming out and looking, and at that point, she offered that there was some work that had been done to basically plug one drain versus another to try to hold the water in the ditch. So I respect that, you know, that action was attempted and taken. I also respect that, that the result of that action could have been that one of my neighbor two were dry, could have been flooded because of that. Counties in a tough spot, there's not a lot of good solutions to this. But with that, I yield.
We actually coordinated with the upstream landowners to make sure that there was a means to contact the county administrator, so that when the water got to a threatening level, that the culvert then would be reopened again. So it was an effort to allow additional time to, for absorption downstream, and then recognizing that the, there was some capacity in the ditches, so we held it there until, until such time as it became an issue for the upstream, which fortunately it wasn't. Before he leaves, I actually, I saw your public documents request, and, you know, we haven't run this through HR yet, but I did put down in chronological order, a list of various events that have happened since 2014. The, there are numerous times, I think four maybe, in which the ditch that you were referring to has been constructed three times, I think, on Merritt's property, or two times on Merritt's property, two or three, something like that. And then one at the, one towards Ms. Osteen's directly, and then another on Mr., at the time, it's Ryan Regus now, but it was Slish property, that directed all the water back to the east. So all of those are referenced on that timeline there. You'll also see a list of various times we have tried to discuss with property owners on trying to achieve an easement agreement to provide a diversion to some of that stormwater. You'll also see recognized on there that we had a community workshop back in 2015 at Ms. Piegles urging, where we collectively discussed the situation that was going on and tried to look at possible solutions. We even, at that time, it was Ms. Osteen trying to work out a drainage easement back through her property, which was at the far east end. Unfortunately, it seems like every time we get a solution that seems to be plausible, it winds up hitting a roadblock. We have since that time, which you'll also see on there, I think it was maybe March of, maybe March of this year. The Army Corps is looking and studying, I think it's nine or 10 additional sites throughout the county for looking at possible stormwater relief solutions. They are at the point where they are developing the model. They anticipate to have it calibrated soon. Once they have it calibrated, and we can probably provide some of your pictures to, where they can run the scenario on that day and see if it mimics the water level. And then their anticipated date in December is to provide the possibility of solutions to address that, if any.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Good evening. My name is Dave Jarvis. County Administrator and Administration, bringing you history and facts of what's transpired since 1961, we moved out there. 1964, we had Hurricane Dora came in, category four storm, rain after rain after rain on us, which was about 59 years ago. But it just like it's doing right now, without a pavement being there. Right straight on, flooded into Brian's place, which was Lewis Turner's property at the time, and put him getting and out of the area because it was dirt, it flooded to bed. Didn't do it again. I moved out there, built a house in 1985. 2014 is when the first time it came about. Easter Sunday, we dug a ditch, hanked it and relieved the pressure coming down without any culvert. If they were, they were collapsed. It went onto the south side of the road, flooding the neighbor there. Three landowners. Once it got there, filled up, come back under the road and flooded back north, flooded Jim Thompson's property. Then he came in, excuse me, and flooded my property. Hank dug a ditch with the backhoe, relieved it. Al Ray and Cal Thomas were nice enough to let us clean it onto their property. Solution. Problem solved. Second event, 8/28. Same issue, coming out of San Pedro Bay. Another ditch is flooded the south side of the road. Same thing, did without a septic system for five weeks, well over five weeks. Third event, 9/20. 20. Same thing, relieved it again. This was after the road had been started paving.
21 is when we started the road.
Well, excuse me, 21. Ditches were put there. It blocked the ditches up on the north side of the road and the south side of the road. Hank made another ditch. County came out and dug with a grade hoe, which relieved the pressure there somewhat. Fourth event, 2021, did without a septic system for 104 days then. This is due to the water coming from San Pedro Bay. The south side of the road, now with the ditches the way they're constructed, you've got three properties that aren't affected and that were affected. Now we've got 10 properties that's on the north side of the road, come on the north side. It is fifth time it's flooded my place. This is the sixth time, if it happens to come again. It won't take much because my house still has water under it. Another two or three inches is going to be flooding right back on the Johnsons and everybody else. I have 70 foot of water. With the flow of water, at least 70 feet on my property flowing toward me. Regular, the times before it all stopped at my place, which, you know, did affect them. We may mention, I may mention in the past, it's going to happen before it's over with. It's going to flood everybody else west of us, which is what's happening now. I know that it's an issue to try to get the water off, you know, on private property, but I do know for a fact that when you do run it to Spring Creek, it'll solve the issue. And that's where, you know, we need all the help, administration, whatever it takes, you know, to try to get this right. This is nine years we've been dealing with this. Made me a mile radar geek, you know, you want to see what's fixing to hit you, because I can tell you, when it rains at my place, I can look out there upon my land and know very quickly how far it's going, how long it's going to be, before the back turn is in there and starts running to me. If you look at the levels, I've looked at it long enough to know, and I can tell you, another rain of three inches is fixing to be detrimental. And we're right here in hurricane season, tropical storm season, and it's, you know, God forbid that we get one, but we're all smart enough to know that they do. It's raining time of the season, it's raining time of the year. All except, but you know, the fact, and we can just get it to the creek somehow or other and possibly open it up. There comes on up our nursery road, it goes into the sinkhole. There's an area there that flows that if you did something there to clean it out, it would relieve pressure from the sinkhole that's right there off of San Pedro Bay Road. It drained quicker into there, it goes into Spring Creek. Spring Creek, Rock Creek, Rocky Creek, kind of all the way. Do appreciate y'all listening to this, you know, it's a challenge. We all understand that, to live out there in the neighborhood. Do appreciate you, appreciate you, all of you. Prayer of the help to keep it from raining.
Thank you.
Back, this flooding has been going on for a long time. I remember back in 2011, on Easter Sunday, I was called. And I spent the whole day that Easter Sunday standing out there, and the water was on both sides of the road. And I know Ms. Howell was having flooding in her mother's apartment. Mr. Jarvis was concerned about the water at that time crossing over the road on the his property. And so we decided that afternoon that we would call an emergency meeting, and we did. And at that time, we decided that we would try to dig a ditch that would alleviate the flooding from both sides. So Merritt Pruitt at the time allowed us to dig the ditch, and that, that helps solve. But I can tell you that since 2011, that this flooding out there has flooded more than one time. It's been several times, and I've seen water on both sides of the road. Now, I don't know, I don't know what's causing this flooding, and I don't think anybody in here knows what's really causing this flooding. I've heard many theories, but I don't think we know for sure what's causing it. So what I do know is that we have a problem out there. That's, that's for sure and certain. So we have enlisted the Army Corps of Engineers to come in and try to help us, try to figure out what is, if they can, what's causing this flooding, and what are the potential remedies. And so it's my understanding from SPAC that they are supposed to render some kind of opinion in December. So I would suggest that we, let's see what these folks have. They're the professionals. They deal with water all the time. And I would suggest that we see what they have to say. And Thompson, if they can figure out where it's And, and Thompson, if they can figure out where it's coming from and how could it maybe be fixed. Now, I know that since, uh, twenty-eleven, when we dug the ditch across Merrick Pullet's property, we've done it another time since then, but we've had issues with landowners. The landowners, they're not want us to dig a ditch through their property, or maybe they've changed their mind now. I've heard some things about that. But, um, up until just recently, uh, the landowners don't want that ditch and they don't want water coming across their, their property. So I'm hoping that the Army Corps of Engineers can shed some light and help us. I think if something could have been done already, we would have already done it because we have not ignored this problem. We have been out there, we tried to address it, we just have not known what to do. We tried everything that we know to do to fix it, but, um, obviously that, that has not worked. So the other thing that I wanna be very cautious about, and I'm sure that when the Army Corps of Engineers gives us their plan, that they're gonna look downstream and they're gonna look at Spring Creek, because what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna transfer a problem from this area to another area. And so I'm sure that they'll have an opinion, and hopefully that won't be the case. Uh, and if that's what they come up with and, and we need to then figure out how are we gonna get landowners to agree and just how we go about it, but what I'm saying is, is, uh, you know, this problem just didn't come up. It's been there a long time, and let's see what the Army Corps does, what they come, what they bring to us, and, uh, let's follow their directions. And maybe that will be something that would give all these people some relief and not cause a problem on downstream.
You have others in the board?
I have.
I have one. Yes, you'll come up. Say your name and address.
My name is David Martin. I live off. Been there six whole year, and this is the first time when they got through that road that I have had water in my life. So it's something, I don't know where it come from or where it is, but I've got it all the way up. I got a little hole down there, that's right. But it's never been up to my house or this time it's come up to my house and on the other side. And I got all the worst causes. It never happened before to live down that road. So I don't, I don't, you know, y'all can go with that.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
I have one question that I could ask.
You will come up.
I am a lady croft. I live on Seventy-Ninth East Oxford Street. I still cannot get to my property unless I crawl somebody else's property to get in there, and I can only drive certain vehicles there.
Can you speak up now?
Because the road is too narrow, the, the road is too narrow. I personally talked to Cal Thomas myself, and he allows me to go into the backside of his property to get to my property, but I have to be careful what vehicle I drive because I don't wanna tear my vehicles up. My brother tried to go through my road and it cost him twelve hundred dollar repair on his car because he tried to come on to get to our property. And he is a disabled veteran, and if something happens to him or me, I mean, I'm like spring chicken, not the oldest of one that lives up there following. But there wouldn't be an ambulance be able or nothing to be able to get into my property at all. And I know that's not just a problem, it's my problem, but it is a problem because I can't get to my property the way I need to go to my property. And I'm just, I don't know that we can wait till December to get some of that water. If, right now, the water in my road getting into work in front of my uncle's house, it was in here, in his house, around his house, and I've lived out there since two thousand and eight, and I never, yeah, that area right there held a little bit of water, but there's a lot of water still there that's deep that I can't go through. And I can't wait till December to get some of that water off my property. And it, the problem is, if, I don't even consider this, and it would be a cruel thing to do, it'd be to try to draw, stop some of that property to come from this coming down on the other side of the road through that culvert onto my property. I stood there and watched it run like a raging river into the, the low spot in on my property and on my uncle's property and filled up that hole, and it's not gonna be, see, we get any more rain. Every time it rains, it may drop this much, but then it rains just a little bit, and all of a sudden it's back up here because all the water that's coming is receding really from their property still underneath the thing because it's right now it's at a level thing. If I, if the culvert was under the road, I've never seen that happen before until the county came out there and whatever they did, if there was not a culvert there, I don't know what happened.
You was there.
But it never, it never, it never did that. It never came through that culvert onto my property there, never.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
You were there before.
I'm sorry. But I'm just saying that every week it rains, it's gonna keep rising, especially because right now it's at a, probably at a level thing, but when it starts rising and coming down again, it's gonna rush like a raging river, like it did before. It's never done that until those, whatever they did. I know the road is higher than it was when they started. I'm sorry, the ditches are deeper. There's no water in the ditches from a certain point after you get past my property and before my property, there is no water running through those ditches. It's all running straight to my property and my uncle's property. So I don't know, um, I don't know, what am I gonna do till now December if there's no way to get that water off my property because it's just not drying up at all. It's receding some off of Dix and them's property, but it's staying in my hole, it's in the hole on my and my uncle's property. Yeah, and, but.
And you're.
I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that if that's the case and from now until the Army Corps of Engineers do or don't ever do anything, I won't be able to go through my driveway again. And luckily, I live high up on the hill, and I was like saying, when I was told there, I was told by the county that I would never see water on my property, that I was in the, one of the highest properties in town in county, and now there is water on my property, and I can't even get to that on my road. I don't know what to tell you, but that's all I can say about it. I'm in a predicament and I don't know what to do about it, nothing.
I was going to ask our fire chief to address, you've got, you've got a way to get in to people's that's flooded. Would you, would you?
Yes, ma'am.
Talk to the people about that to give them some sort of comfort knowing that we could get an ambulance or somebody in there?
Over the past several years, we've become very familiar with flooded driveways and flooded roads, um, throughout areas of the county wherever the rain happens to shift. So we've had a lot of experience planning and preparing, so we have a vehicle, high water vehicle, that's purposes for just that. If somebody's flooded, if EMS can't get an ambulance in, we respond with them. We'll bring in a, a high water truck, scare them, get the patient out, and then bring them back to the ambulance so you can be on your way and go into the hospital. So we, we have plans in place as far as emergency response. Sometimes for structured fires, we might be limited because it's a different type of vehicle, um, but we always, we will always figure out a way to get to you. In all my years in the fire service, I have never left a patient sitting somewhere and said, "I can't get to you." So rest assured, we will always find a way, but we do have plans in place for these such things. Um, myself, I went up with county administrator, we rode the roads and just to see, to make sure is, is everything that we can access and how do we plan ahead and spend accordingly? So like I said, we do have plans in place and we very regularly will look at these situations and see if it's higher or lower, what do we need to do. On that high water vehicle even has as much as an inflatable Zodiac on there that we, if I couldn't even get that truck, get that truck through, I can blow up a boat real quick and I can get into you that way. So like I said, the fire service and EMS, we take it very seriously to make sure that we can get to you if you need us.
To get to your house is a big problem. Mine looks like a baby iron horse out there to where you trying to get in, if you don't have four wheel drive, you don't get in there with it like that. And it's chewed up property, you know, just.
And like I said, that's where, for us, like I said, if you had an emergency, we have a full wheel drive truck, you know, looking it way up high so it can go, it can pour a pretty deep water.
I access knee dress, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah, like I said, for, I can, like I said, I'm only speaking towards, or the emergency act, I, you know, your daily commu, I'm not speaking towards that, I'm just saying for.
Thank you. We will, uh, move on to the next title. This will be, we move number twenty-three up for, uh, county administrator out, the board to consider approval of revised certificate of purchase in light of necessity for RG Ambulance Service, suggested by county administrator.
The county has to notify that Century Ambulance Service, Inc. is in the process of being purchased from Covailent Health, who is the current parent company. RG Ambulance Service, Inc. is in the, like I said, the process of purchasing Century Ambulance Service and will continue to do business as Century Ambulance Service. Per the contractual agreement between Century Ambulance Service, the county may approve a change in ownership as follows, and in your packet I put an excerpt from the contract. As the contract reads, "Any change in contractor's ownership shall, for purchases of the agreement, be considered a form of entitlement. The county shall not unreasonably withhold this approval of a requested change in ownership so long as the transferee is of known financial and business integrity for the undertaking and can conclusively demonstrate the ability to perform all terms and conditions and obligations of this ambulance service agreement." Although RG Ambulance Service, Inc. has not demonstrated a history of performing 911 transportation services, Century Ambulance Service has performed 911 transportation services for Taylor County and other entities. Staff has not identified any concerns with the ability for Century Ambulance Service, Inc. to continue to perform all contractual obligations as of this date. So there would be two requests of the board, and, and representatives from our Century and RG Ambulance Service are here. I would like to give them an opportunity to speak, but the request is number one, to transfer the C O P C N, um, to continue emergency medical services, and also for the board to trans, to approve the assignment of the contractual agreement. So I'm sure you have some questions for Century and for RG Ambulance Service.
Commissioners, good evening. Charlie Gray for RG Ambulance Service. We are the organization that is in the process of acquiring Century Ambulance. My title is Vice President. I'm responsible for RG's operations currently in seventeen Florida counties that we serve, and once we acquire Century Ambulance, we'll be serving twenty-nine Florida counties. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I do. My biggest question is, uh, talking non-emergent transfers. I know you're really proud of expecting this, but today, you know, we have a patient comes into DMH and it's deemed by the facility non-emergent. But they need, they need a transfer, but it's deemed non-emergent, then they're going to Tallahassee or wherever. Then it's up to Tallahassee to send a truck to, to pick up this patient to come to their facility, or there's an agreement between DMH and Lake City where a truck comes from Lake City to transfer the patient to Tallahassee. Is that correct?
In part.
Well, I'll just get.
Right, I understand.
I get calls frequently that when it's, it's time, when a patient is, is told that they're gonna be transferred to another facility, and it's pretty fresh on my mind because one just sat there for about sixteen hours. And, you know, I understand these transfer trucks are, you know, it's a non-emergent transfer truck. They can't tell me that these trucks were busy for sixteen hours and couldn't put this patient, and this is not the first time it's happened, so what is your plan to make this a better situation for these citizens in this county?
Absolutely. So Commissioner English, I can appreciate all of your comments. So I, I became aware of the situation probably about three or four weeks ago when I first met, uh, the county administrator here in St. Louis, fire chief, the undersheriff, the representatives from the hospital. So I have all the, by the way, I have forty-seven years of history providing private sector EMS here in the state of Florida personally, so we, a couple of things. First of all, we wanna make sure that the patients are moved in a timely fashion, understanding that they are non-emergent. So currently, you mentioned Lake City, so we have an operation in Lake City, and as quickly as we have a non-emergency ambulance become available, we will respond them to DMH to move the patient. The hospital, if we'd say it's gonna be three hours, four hours, five hours, the hospital, okay, could also call Tallahassee Memorial to see if they can do it any more quickly. They can contact other ambulance providers. That's kind of what's happening today. My goal in this is to ensure that we're moving, that Century Ambulance is moving the patient in a timely fashion and getting the patient moved as rapidly as possible. So what, by the way, just, just let me stop here for a moment, just so I don't confuse anybody. What we're asking you all to do is transfer the C O P C N, but that sale isn't effective until September fourteenth. So what I'm talking about today, um, we're in the process of acquiring Century Ambulance, but the acquisition won't be done until September fourteenth. So I just wanted you to know where my control is lying, at what point. So my goal is, you know, after we met with everybody here the first time, talked with the fire chief, talked with the undersheriff, both the fire department here and the sheriff's officer have some personnel that we should be availing ourselves of on a part-time basis or as an, as need basis. Also utilized, coupled by utilizing our own personnel. So I think that if we do that, create a pool of personnel and appropriately incentivize those personnel to be available for us, when the hospital needs a transport done, it should get done. Now, Century Ambulance still has Lake City to rely on also, you know, in that event. That'll always continue to be the case. But my goal is to create a pool of personnel utilizing local folks here in town that are trained and educated to provide the service and get patients moved rapidly. So, and, and by the way, there's already been some conversations with the fire chief and the sheriff's office about this, um, you know, moving forward. I, um, I'm, again, you know, I'm a little hamstrung until September fourteenth, but that's the plan. And by the way, just so you all understand, I have some, uh, I, I, I lived in Key West and ran an ambulance service there for many years. That is, uh, you talk about being remote, you know, you're a hundred and forty miles to the mainland. So we, we grappled with these all the time, and that was how I solved it there, by using personnel within fire service, you know, making them available, and some of the police officers, and even those that, the words E M Ts, if patients basically like support, we can get that drive, the police officer, for instance, certified as a driver, just so they can drive the ambulance with the E M T in back. There's a lot of ways to work through this, so that's the plan.
Is there a, a measurement of a timeframe that the time a patient is, is told that they're needed transferred? I'm talking non-emergent because I feel pretty confident that the, the emergency transfer taken care of. But is there a measurement that you all have that said, "Hey, I heard it's told at noon they need a transfer," that we just, I mean, because today it just seems like, I'll be honest, it's, it's more of a, seems to be, we'll get you there, we'll get someone there.
So, and, and, I understand, I'll, I'll give you an example, so I was talking with county administrator about this, and we operate down in Dade County, just not great comparison, okay, but I have the same problem there, okay? We're extremely busy in Dade County, we have a lot of ambulances down there, okay? We turn out eighty ambulances to Dade, Dade County, our organization does, and we still have to triage and prioritize requests for service. So if a hospital calls our organization, and let's say they call ten o'clock in the morning, and they've got to move a patient to another facility, now, does the patient need to get there? Absolutely. Is it, you know, how urgent is it based on patient condition? But that's where we triage and prioritize when we're going to get a patient moved and work out what we, just an ETA for the hospital, estimate the time of arrival. My goal here would be reasonably to move patients, the patients at that level was in sixty minutes to two hours if we can. I want to tell you, when you're the patient laying in the hospital bed, you know from getting the calls, ten minutes seems like ten hours, but it's your family, I know. And, and, and by the way, folks, the other part of it is, is understanding that there's, you know, if the patient is urgent, our medical director, Dr. Redfield is here, and I know you, you said it a moment ago, those patients are being taken care of, you know, so, you know, so my goal reasonably is to try and move patients within a couple of hours by creating this pool of personnel. Is it always going to happen? I'd be lying here if I told you, yes, sir. It's not, but we're going to do our best with it and certainly improve the situation.
Yeah, I'm not discounting that, that the patients are not taken care of when they are there, I'm just really referring to, because once they're told that they need to transfer, I mean, they expect to move along, so, uh, but I, so if we could go, put a goal on what, what, what we expect, then that would be a good rate.
And, and, you know, a couple, you know, sometimes it might be three hours, it might be four hours, as quickly as you can relative personnel, and Commissioner, the only reason I compare it to Dade County where we are so busy, and I have, you know, a lot of ambulances, I have eighty-two vehicles in Dade County that are licensed by the state of Florida, I'm still facing the same problem there that I have here. I, I just, you know, just, yeah, so I, I don't, just wanted to explain that to you, but we're going to work real hard at it and, you know, make it a heck of a lot better than it is for you today and for the hospital.
That's all I have, if we have any more questions?
Yes, no, I just heard you mention sixteen minutes to two hours. Can you guarantee that turnaround time?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, and I wouldn't do that, and I'll tell you why, because we're going to, as I said, try to, we're, we're working to create a pool of personnel, and on any given day, I might have that, I might have five people available, so I, it's simple, I, it's easy enough to get two folks, you know, an E M T and a paramedic, or two E M Ts, but if we happen to have a day when we don't, and we're, and the personnel just aren't available, we still might have to bring a vehicle from Lake City, and that could take several hours, so I don't want to, I don't want to make blanket statements and promises to you like that.
Okay, you know, we've all had calls.
I understand.
Lots of calls, and I understand the criteria of, of, of what you go by, you know, I've read that several times, and I understand that. However, you're, most people out there don't understand that, and when they have a family member that's in a lot of pain, or has a history of this, that, or the other, they don't understand that, they don't care, to them, it's an emergency, so, um, and I think if, if you have to wait sixteen hours, that's unacceptable.
Commissioner, you, I, I, I would totally agree with everything that you just said. First of all, just kind of just backtrack for a moment, when folks are in the hospital, whether it's themselves, their loved one, they're in pain, or they're just plain anxious because they've been told, you gotta go to Tallahassee, you gotta go to Gainesville, or wherever it may be, right? People are anxious and they want to move, and we understand that, so we agree, but I think what's important to understand about that also is that if the physicians in the hospital, the hospital staff who are caring for that patient deemed they're urgent, that patient would go right now. I, I know you get it, but I just, you know, but the other, the other side of it, you mentioned the sixteen hours, and I heard that story, and you're absolutely right, that's totally unacceptable, and what I will tell you is, that on my watch, that'll never happen. That's ridiculous, that I will.
I'll hold you to that.
You can, ma'am, you can hold me to the sixteen hours, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah, because that's, that's ridiculous, but now, I want to ask you this. It seems like to be your widespread, so with hospitals with facilities, is it common for these hospitals to rely on the county to bring in someone for routine or, or inter-facility transfers, or do they have their own non-emergent ban? What's most commonplace these days?
So, and I'm going to speak to you about rural communities, because we're rural here.
Yes.
So, and I've got to take you back to my Monroe County days, okay? The city of Key West contracted with the organization, by the way, I was much younger back in those days, with this organization that I worked for to provide ambulance service, and that ambulance service, because it was the only ambulance service in Key West, was responsible for the nine-one-one, and was resp, and, and by virtue of the fact that we were the only ambulance service, we, we became responsible for the, uh, it's, by the way, the term that we use in our business is called inter-facility, moving from one facility to another. So we became responsible for the inter-facility movement of patients, okay? And, and so is it common? Yes, but I will tell you that I attend to meetings today at the hospital, um, it's a quarterly discussion of V M S, and there's a lot of different topics going to discuss, this particular topic was one of them, and the hospital administration doesn't just, if they don't like our ETA, they feel that it's too long right now, as things are today, they're calling other ambulance services. They're not just waiting for Century to show up, so I want to tell you that I think the hospital is doing a great job for you in doing everything that they can today, but is, going back to your question in and of itself, is it common to do that in a rural commu, in a more rural community? Answers, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, let's see, one other question. So you've been in business how long, forty-five years?
Oh, I've been around, I've been doing, me personally, forty-seven years doing private sector emergency medical services.
Okay, I, I guess, I, I, well, next question would be, has anybody checked these people out? Have we, have we looked at their history and talked to other people, and, and do we know what, what we might be getting into?
I believe so, I'm, and Dan, you can feel free to join in. Dan and myself and the undersheriff reviewed the packet that's, that's in front of you, and I don't have personal knowledge of this service, but I didn't see any, I mean, going by the requirements of our contract, I didn't see anything to indicate that they would not be able to perform the contract, because it's still Century Ambulance Services, so it's still the same folks at Century, it's just the parent company has changed, is that the best way to explain it?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Well, and, and, and I don't mean to be ugly, but you can put anything on a contract, and, you know, I'm just wondering if we have checked, checked them out. I think we would, it would, you know, we need to do our due diligence and see, make sure we know what we're getting into.
Yes, ma'am, and, and the, and the agenda that, that, the, I guess disclaimer is RG does not have nine-one-one experience.
So that's not exactly.
Okay, well, help me out with that.
So currently in Miami-Dade County, we're contracted with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue to provide their basic life support nine-one-one services. So what happens in Dade County is, if you dial nine-one-one, and the way they triage calls in their call centers there, they make a determination whether the request is advanced life support or basic life support. If it's advanced life support, that's a determination, they just respond fire rescue who will transport. If it's basic life support, they will respond fire rescue and one of two ambulance services. Uh, and by the way, RG Ambulance is a corporate name for three entities that operate in seventeen Florida counties currently. In Dade County, it's medical care transportation, so, and better, well, known locally in Dade County as M C T. So M C T responds with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, and we transport their B L S patients, it frees up the fire department to respond to the next nine-one-one call.
Okay, one other question. I had someone to call me recently, and they wanted me to find out if someone says, I don't want to go to Tallahassee, I want to go to Gainesville, can they make that choice? And will you take them where they want to go, because this just happened?
Are you, I'm just, oh, just, okay, so we're talking about going to inter-facility transport?
I, I, the patient was sick and needed to be transferred.
Were they at the hospital?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, okay, we honor, uh, let me say this to you, we honor patient requests, that's the first thing. However, you have to be aware, and I don't know the circumstances, of course, I'm not familiar with it, but when you have a patient that's being transferred to another hospital on an inter-facility basis, the hospitals here, Doctors Memorial, along with, and with the patient's physician and doctors involved, are making those arrangements, whether they're going to Tallahassee, Jacksonville, Gainesville, and a lot of times, patients are transferred to receiving facilities that are able to take care of whatever it is that's wrong with them. That, so, when, when the hospital calls us, they'll say to us, we have Mrs. Jones who's in the emergency room, and she needs to go to Tallahassee Memorial, or we have Mrs. Jones that's in our emergency room, she needs to go to Gainesville. We honor those requests, um, but we, you know, usually, again, I just want to, I don't want to muddy the waters up, it's really many times based on what's the best hospital for the patient to be in based on diagnosis.
Yeah, well, this particular patient, uh, had her heart doctor was in Gainesville, and so she wanted to go to Gainesville so that she would be where, where her doctor was, so was that, was that because the, maybe the hospital here says, no, we're making arrangements in Tallahassee?
You know what, I'll be, Commissioner, I, I'm a little hamstrung to answer the question. What I can say to you about our organization is, is that we do honor, you know, a patient or a family request based on destination, but it's not normally the ambulance service that's working that out. It's done at the hospital, and so I, I'm kind of hamstrung to answer it.
So one other question, and I'll be done.
Sure.
If you go and you pick up somebody from home, and they say, I don't want to go to this hospital, I don't want to go to Tallahassee, I want to go to Gainesville, what happens then?
Okay, the patient is not, this is not a nine-one-one call?
Yeah, a nine-one-one call.
It is a nine-one-one call.
Yes.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to step back for a moment and ask our medical director to come up and answer the question, because I don't, because he has, he has his own calls, but let him answer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dr. Redfield, I'm the medical director for Century, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. As far as it comes to the inter-facility transport that you were just talking about, um, it is the sending hospital's responsibility to find that other hospital that will accept the patient, and so you could say, I want to go to Gainesville, but you call Gainesville and they might be full, or they don't have that specialty, and it gets accepted over to Tallahassee, and that's why my patients can request where they want to go, but sometimes they just don't have the capability or the resources at the time to go there, so it's up to the sending hospital to find out, find a receiving hospital who can take care of that. So in that particular case, maybe Shands or Northwood were full, and the only cardiologist they could get to was in Tallahassee.
Okay, so when I call, when I call these people back, what am I supposed to tell them? His question about his mother was, why couldn't she have been sent to Gainesville? So what, what, what would be the best thing for me to tell them?
I think that is a discussion with, with the family that the hospital at the time, it was our DMH's, that they tried making phone calls, and the hospital that could take care of the family member the best at that time was in Tallahassee, not in Gainesville. That's the best to tell, to be honest with you. It's a very, I, I work the year as well, guys, and it's a very frustrating thing for us to get patients transferred to any, to any hospital we work at, and you would love to do what the patient wants in their way, um, but some of these hospitals, especially these bigger academic facilities, they get full, they're, they're very selective what they take sometimes. And then, you had another question with the nine-one-one side of things?
Yeah, good question, Doctor, was, huh, if we pick up a patient nine-one-one at home, can, can the patient choose what destination they're going, what hospital they're going to go to?
When it comes to nine-one-one and entry protocols, or entry destinations, what we term them as medical directors, it gets a little more complicated, because you have to look at the whole service and what's going on in the county at the time. Uh, we have certain criteria that my medics know that, it's going to need to go to a bigger facility than Dr. Morehouse can handle, and they'll bypass that to go to where it can be handled, um, but I can use an example, if there's a really bad car wreck somewhere, right, and there's a lot of patients, and we only have two ambulances in town, we might come here to get them stabilized, so we can get those ambulances back out, help with nine-one-one, so it's a very difficult balance. Uh, we try to honor patients' requests if they are reasonable, um, but we also got to make sure we protect all the senses of Taylor County at the time, make sure we do have a nine-one-one response.
I do have some questions, I believe, to this, in respect to how you guys operate. I understood that you were currently operating in seventeen Florida counties.
That's correct, Commissioner.
How long have you operated in that capacity?
So, um.
Tell me if I ask a question that's, I don't know.
No, 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 it's, 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 because some of it was done through acquisition, that's, you know, so I'll explain it to you. So the original organization that serves Monroe, Dade, and Broward was founded in twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty, two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty, year two thousand, actually, it was July of two thousand, um, and then several years ago, maybe four years ago, we acquired another company that operates on the Treasure Coast in Martin St. Lucie, Indian River, Okeechobee, and all the way west to Se, uh, Seabrook, Highlands County. So that acquisition was done, and then at about the same time, four, about four years ago also, we acquired, um, another company that operates in central Florida, okay, that serves seven of Orange, Osceola, Polk, Flagler, Lake, South Terre.
But in, in, it sounds like the majority of those are not rural areas, and I understand what the Keys are, and I understand that, but, but in, in respect of those seventeen counties, how many of those would be rural counties?
So, other than, other than Monroe, um, you know, Highlands County is pretty, well, by the way, Okeechobee is very rural, if you're familiar with it.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's, that's an extremely rural county, so, so Okeechobee and Highlands are, are very rural counties.
Three out of seventeen?
Uh, three with Monroe, yeah.
Okay, so a fifth.
Yes, sir.
So four fifths of those areas are mostly highly populated? Reason I'm asking that is because in, in my understanding, I, I'd like to see and try to get a clear picture of, of what you guys do currently, and I think I understand that, that you depend on inter-facility transfers, given resources that are in highly populated areas, but that's not what we have at Doctors Memorial.
No, that's, that's not what you have here at all.
I understand, of course, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, no, I mean, this is for us, um, so we're also, by the way, Century Ambulance, as you may know, serves Columbia County for nine-one-one also, so, so we're, you know, we're taking over two counties, by the way, Commissioner, I've run a multitude of large and small nine-one-one operations in my career, okay? Our organization today, you know, this is, um, you know, something new for this organization, but the folks that here are here today running Century Ambulance, are going to continue to be here.
So you're going to maintain the full staff that's currently employed by Century?
Yes, sir.
I see. And, and help me, if you will, in understanding that, I, I do understand that Columbia County is, is a key asset for Century Ambulance, but it sounds like in, in that capacity, again, that, that resource is, is really tapped because of a higher population and a higher number of resources, so it sounds like even if you're able to utilize this pool to operate an inter-facility transfer truck, the truck still may be two hours away. the truck still may be too high in weight.
That is, yeah, if you're asking me about the truck, if it's coming from Lake, from Columbia County, I'm sorry, have a turn.
Yeah, I want to understand clearly what we can expect in the fashion of the interfacility transfer. And it's not to dwell on that, because really, that's not all this is about. But it certainly plays a key part in what's going on currently.
It does, Commissioner. So, as I say, my goal, you know, here is to create a pool of local personnel, okay? That will work with us to get these patients moved in a really timely fashion. That's the first goal.
And is that history because of how that succeeded in other service areas?
Yes, sir, it is, and it's not just my personal history. This is, in rural communities, it's very common to utilize personnel, off-duty personnel, fire personnel, police officers, sheriff's officers, whatever, you know, that group of personnel. Because they're great folks to have, to work for your organization.
But that rural area is only a fifth of how, where you guys currently operate.
Right, so, that's correct. But please, understand, Commissioner, that I, this isn't the first time, okay, that I've served rural communities. I'm just speaking about, you're asking about this organization today. So, this has worked and continues to work across the country in rural communities. By the way, I'm not, I'm not that smart. So, you know, it works really well. You know, I just, everybody knows and understands that utilizing personnel is the right thing to do. And it works well. Now, as it relates to Columbia County, if we weren't able to have, you know, as I was asked a moment ago, if we weren't able to have off-duty personnel, whether it's police, fire or our own, come in to move a patient, then we would send an ambulance from Columbia County.
I see.
So, that would be, that would be, that would be the default for us?
Yes, sir, I can understand that. And help me, if you would, I believe you said around 2000 you guys started acquiring these kind of companies that offer these services?
So, the original organization, Medical Care Transportation, which was actually founded in Miami-Dade County. It was actually July 14th, 2000, at 2:00 PM. The county commission swung the gavel and gave these folks a COPCN. I was working for a different organization at the time, but it all happened simultaneously. That's why I can tell you that they time the minute, because it was real important to me personally at that time. So, that's when it started. And they've operated through the years successfully in Miami-Dade County, grown, done some acquisitions, and here we are now at this point in the company's history doing this acquisition.
In that respect, can you disclose the acquisition before Century Ambulance?
Should certainly. So, there was, it was known as, before Century, there were two. One was All County Ambulance, which is located on the Treasure Coast. And the other was American Ambulance, located in the Central Park Market, based in Orlando.
And was that in the last three years?
In the last three to four years, yes, sir.
Three to four years?
Four years.
Do those agreements tend to be renewed with those service areas? As to after you guys have acquired those services, that you see that contract or those options renewed or continue with those counties?
Yes, sir, well, so, the county, all 17 Florida counties that we currently work in have renewed our COPCN successfully year after year after year.
Those more of an annual rate?
Well, some of them are, there's a couple that are annual, some are biannual. But we...
But not something that's three or four years?
There are, let me think for a moment. Miami-Dade, Broward. I think, I believe Miami-Dade is every four years. Also, Broward County, I believe, is every three years. I'm not quite, I have to go back and look. But some of them, some of them are years. Majority were every two years, some a few, or three and four years. But we've never, we've never not had a COPCN renewed. We've successfully renewed COPCNs in every county that we serve over the years. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, let's talk about interlocal agreements, okay? I know that we have had issues with that. Especially with a town nearby where we were doing a lot of transfers for them and then our people having to wait because our ambulance was in another town. So, I know if it's a 911 call and it's San Diego versus an IFT, how will you handle that? But what I don't want to happen is for us to be doing IFTs from another town when I've got somebody up in my district that's in need of a 911 ambulance and they're on the road doing something for another county.
Hey, I'm going to, yes, it's right behind me. And let me just tell you, okay, that it's very important that you all understand that our medical director, Dr. Redfield, makes these decisions for us. We're not making them, so...
Hi, Dr. Redfield. But rural experience is kind of, from my background, I kind of specialize in rural EMS in the panhandle. So, I have several services that are similar to Taylor County in the size and having a hospital, things like that. As far as, it's called mutual aid, is what you're asking.
Speak up, I've had, because I can't hear.
What you're talking about is called mutual aid is where you have agreements with other counties when they get, when they have resources and you help each other out. Before Century took over, it was a very liberal agreement to go back and forth, to help each other out. We realized pretty quickly that we had to put some standards in and some procedures to make sure we weren't leaving town unnecessarily. We have, we do have mutual aid guidelines and they're for very extreme circumstances, such as a multi-difficult car accident, multiple patients, overrun any agency. We've had them here and we've had other counties come in and help us for those. Those things that if you're traveling with your family and you call 911, you hope you can bring some resources there. So, we do occasionally go for mutual aid, but it's a very defined criteria that is very strict. And if it's your family on that line and there's no ambulance there, you'd want somebody to respond.
And I understand when there's, you know, situations, lucky you described where you have a long time in an accident or something like that. But just routinely, routinely, I have an issue that if our ambulance says, "I have a service", when it's not a disaster situation.
Yes, we do.
And this has happened with us and I don't like that.
It was in the past, I mean, tell you right now about our guidelines. It's, these are emergencies that truly need a response. It's not, and I know in the past, this is pretty my time, they'd go for lab values and nursing home pickups and things like that. That's not happening. These are true trauma alerts, cardiac arrest, strokes, where an ambulance, they don't have ambulance and we're trying to provide something for that family that's having a true emergency. So, we're not going for non-emergency stuff.
Thank you.
Sir, did you have a question earlier?
Yes, I did. Now, I'm trying to remember it. Sorry. If someone is wanting to go to a different hospital and on these, the first thing that we're talking about, which was non-emergency.
Yes.
And the driver or the, he ends here, finds out that, you know, that Tallahassee is full and I've got to carry you to Gainesville or vice versa. Is that explained to the family or the person that's wanting to go? So, they'll know that they're not just being called off to the hospital that's thinking that that's what the service wants to do?
So, in general, when you're getting transferred, just say you come to Doctors Memorial, you have a surgeon that needs to be done, so that, usually as a physician, like I do, I'll go in and say, "Hey, sir, I found out you have appendicitis. We need to transfer you out to some, a place that's capable of doing this." And once I find an acceptance, right? So, once I know you have to go out, that's one step. The second step is find a place I can accept you, and that can take a really long time to implement.
Certainly.
And so, if you're like, "I want to go, my surgeon's in Tallahassee." I would say, "I'll call them first for you." If I can get them to accept, I'm like, "Hey, sir, good news, we're going to Tallahassee." If I can't get that surgeon or that hospital to accept, I'm gonna have to start calling around to find another.
Are you speaking to the patient yourself?
As a physician, yeah.
Okay, all right. That answers the question then, because I just wanted to make sure. Because when listening to Commissioner Eagle, it sort of sounded like the person wasn't explained and they were just kind of, had to go. And that, and of course, all we're doing, all my commissioners are doing are getting calls and getting hearsay, so to speak, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, and that's, you know, Doctors Memorial Hospital, they tell you, "Hey, we need to send you somewhere if you don't have the capabilities, this is where..."
They'll do that fine and answers the question.
Dr. Redfield, I just want to make sure that Commissioner understands it's not you as our medical director, it's the hospital's physician.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, we're not.
I was thinking, you know, maybe you didn't understand my question.
No, it's the hospital, the doctor in the hospital that day.
That's that person's responsibility.
Yes, it's your case.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Do you understand where I was going with that?
When you go, if you're called and that's supposed to be the individual that needs your caution, and when you get there and it says, "Don't care many, care many Gainesville." That's where you get a little bit of money, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you'd ask them in that?
If you get very money, it's, they say, somebody calls because they stubbed their toe.
But yeah.
And they want, "I want to go to Gainesville, I'm right here."
Sort of policy is if you, if someone, if you're called, you carry them to the nearest medical facility and let that physician make the determination whether he goes or not?
No, it's gonna be the appropriate, closest facility. Sometimes that might be Doctors Memorial, sometimes it might be Shands, sometimes Tallahassee, HCA. It's what's the closest appropriate facility for the patient.
Yeah. All of us, when we call you, it's the most, most dear Saint John Hall. We want what we want and we tell you that.
Yes, sir.
You know, this might not be, not going to totally enough, but he won't move Shands. You won't do that.
In that particular, so I'm taking the most appropriate facility, which is most likely Doctors Memorial Hospital, they can handle that.
What it looks like is somebody on that ambulance makes a determination where that person goes.
I write protocols for destination and that's what they follow. It's to be decided in that sense. Not that they follow my protocols and if there's questions, they call me. I mean, all times of the month, I get this one else. But you guys get it too, so I feel like you're paying on those.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it, though. Some do, too. If I get, if I call the 911 to reason, I told you so, because I can't handle it.
My guys will get there and handle the situation.
Yeah, two, on those where we want to go, we want to go to Gainesville first, go toe, once an insurance company gets involved, the patient needs to understand that. Insurance company might say, "We're not, we're not paying for that trip to Gainesville because it's a lot more, because it's so much further away." And the patient may say, or even if they said, "Okay, I'll take you", that patient may be on the hook to pay that entire bill on their own without insurance. And that's not their fault or the patient's fault, that's a private insurance company issue. And that's something else that I think the public needs to be aware of, that if you might get what you want, but what you want might be more than you think.
I just asked, I mean, it seems like you guys have had a discussion with Doctors Memorial in respect to, and we've, I guess, torn across a number of ways, but have you guys had a conversation as to, and we spoke with Doctors Memorial about them providing or maintaining a transfer truck on-site? Have you guys talked, you've talked staff, but I'm speaking specifically to the asset.
Right.
I don't know if you might have had that kind of discussion.
I have, I personally have not, Commissioner, as a matter of fact, for the first time today, I met the administration of Doctors for the first time today. I've never met them before. I was at a meeting at Doctors Memorial today, so I haven't had that discussion. And I don't think that, I mean, certainly, by the way, you know, if Doctors Memorial chose to do that, they could. I'll be candid with you, I don't think it would be very cost-effective for them. Because, well, I recognize that these transfers are problematic here and have been, and I want to improve it for you, okay? And I'm going to. But in reality, there's not enough of them, in my mind, just as understanding our business, to sustain it financially. And also, I will tell you that the other part of the problem, and I don't, you know, I don't know if this is a whole other thing, is that ever since COVID, EMTs and paramedics staffing is difficult. We are blessed here, I will tell you, in Taylor County. We have some excellent EMTs and paramedics, because I've had the opportunity to spend time and meet my staff here. So, we're blessed here, I want you to know that. But staffing in general is difficult. So, that's why kind of, when we talk about this model, you know, of getting, you know, utilizing fire personnel and sheriff's office and our off-duty personnel to make something work, it takes the whole builders these days to make it work, because personnel are difficult. And by the way, not just here in Taylor County, not just in Florida, but across the US when it comes to EMTs and paramedics.
Well, certainly, I can, I can understand that. But even if you have that pool here and your truck has to come from Lake City, that's extending the transfer time. So, the availability of the truck for transfer, it can be a very key piece.
Commissioner, I'll tell you, I wouldn't disagree with you.
I got that answer for you.
Go ahead. So, I'm Aaron Smith, I'm the operations manager at Century here at Taylor County. With your question, we have a unit here. I have a four unit, I have four trucks. I have the truck that's stationed down in Ste. Ashy, I have two trucks stationed here and parried in a backup unit. So, in case anything were to happen, we are the three. I have something we can put them in and we don't lose any of the service. But at the same time, we also utilize that truck with the staffing when we have it, myself included, to go over in DMH with that unit and run the call.
How often does that happen?
I just ran in one last week, last week. I got a truck in there.
So, last week and was one of, I mean, one of them?
So, currently, right now, I can tell you that we have 43 requests for transfer last month from Doctors Memorial, we took 33 of them.
Do you know what's an average, what time that have been for those 33?
Probably a couple hours at the most with our 911 trucks. If they deemed emergent, it's about 30 to 45 minutes.
So, we're talking interfacilities?
That's what these are, these are, this is what I'm talking, just the interfacility calls, yes.
Right, and that average time again was?
With the 911 trucks, when we have to pull the 911 truck out of service.
I want to be clear about an inter...
And I'm being, I am too. We use the 911 trucks primarily here in Taylor County to run your interfacility stuff.
Aaron, he's trying to make a distinction between emergent, emergency and non-emergent.
Oh, okay.
So, he has, is that correct, Commissioner?
So, with the non-emergents, we don't use the 911 trucks, they come from Lake City or myself.
So, that time is a little different then?
My last one that I ran, I had about a 15-minute when I was at it.
You had 15-minute wait for a non-emergent?
Then I got to the hospital. Because I was on the truck with an EMT that was working an overtime shift with me. And I staff that any day that I am in the Taylor County office, which on the majority of days, it's about four to five days a week that I am in the office.
Okay, so, 15-minute wait?
That it took me 15 minutes for the time the call was given to me to arrive to the hospital to pick up the patient and go.
And is it fair to say that's close to any average for those counties?
For currently, the current average, this is a new model that we have just started with me being on the truck. No, you're looking anywhere between an hour to two hours on average.
Aaron, if I can, I think, so, that is the day that Aaron's in the office and you have someone available. So, say on a weekend, when you're not in the office, that's when these non-emergent transfers can become very challenging.
I have a call, I do already go through my off-duty list of paramedics and EMTs to see if I can get them to come in and run the transfer. But weekends are difficult. Everybody cherishes their weekends, so it is difficult. But with, we did it today. I had an off-duty paramedic to come in to go run a transfer today. Coming off of, I believe, the floor, just patient was. So, this, I'm brainstorming and trying my best here to get as many of these patients... So this, I'm brainstorming and trying my best here to get as many of these patients out as I can. And with that model of me running the calls between my, my office hours, it's been working, getting some people to come in, and the off time, to come and pick up. It's just kind of a matter of if anybody's available at that time.
So Commissioner, that's what, so that's the other side of what they're doing right now. And we'll continue to do that, because Aaron is here five days a week. But I think that the reality of what the county administrators are trying to say, and Aaron is saying to you also, night terms, weekends, and if we don't have that personnel on some given day, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to set, set our organization, set Century up, tell you all something, and then, you know, you get a phone call, or something happens, or you hear something. And I understand it, so I want to make sure that we're being reality-based about it. So I think that, you know, Century today has taken a lot of steps. We're gonna take other steps to serve the community, and I, I think that, you know, it's, it's it's the best plan that we have, or that anybody's gonna come up with, in my mind, to serve the community.
All right, there's no other questions or discussion, I will have a motion to approve the request here.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and this will be effective since 2014.
All right. constitutional law. Senator, the Board to Consider Approval of Resolution Providing for Extension for the 23 Tax Assessment Roles Pursuant to Section 197.323, provided by Mr. Martin.
I will be speaking for, for tax collector tonight. He is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners authorize and direct the Value Adjustment Board and the Property Appraiser to certify and extend the 2023 tax rules prior to completion of the VAB hearings pursuant to Section 197.323. The final tax rules will be reclassified, recertified following the conclusion of the VAB hearings in accordance with Section 193, 122 Florida statutes. I believe this is about the fifth year our tax collector has asked for the board to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to read the resolution of the board.
I have a motion to read the resolution. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
A resolution of Taylor County Florida providing for the extension of the 2023 Assessment Roles Pursuant to Sections 197.323 and 193.122 Florida statutes, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Senator, the Board to Consider Appointment of 2023 Value Adjustment Board Citizen Member invited for
Selena, do you have that information?
He asked me to put it on here, he, he did stated that he did talk to
Wallace, Mr. Holmes, yes, and he did agree to it.
Yeah.
And then had another man that said he would like to, what happened without?
Well, I think we, in our meeting, we Mr. Holmes, the city member, if he was wanting to update his membership, then we would move with that, but if he didn't, then we would move to the next candidate.
Motion to approve, Wallace Holmes.
I would move to approve, Wallace Holmes, have a second, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Senator, the Board to Consider Approval of Never Engaged Between Center County and Cushing Appraisal Group Incorporated for the Yellow Book appraisal for the possible acquisition of the 3.95 millimeter known as Spring Warrior, presented by Senator.
Hey, everybody. This is for the required Yellow Book appraisal that the Gulf Consortium requires for the possible acquisition of Spring Warrior.
All right.
It has been approved, we do have approval, if the Board approves it tonight, by the Gulf Consortium and their legal counsel, Mr. Regis Hall, to move forward if the Board approves it tonight.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve, uh, for the people.
Oh, again, question by Commissioner.
And I talked to LaWanda about this, and to be brutally frank, I don't know how many Yellow type appraisal, appraisers are around, but boy, howdy. If you read this appraisal services and I don't know whether I wrote you a letter or if I just told you orally that I didn't like it.
You told me you did not like it, but I don't believe I received a letter. And Melody did get, we did get quotes from, from three entities. One was a no quote, the second one was higher, and the Gulf Consortium did approve this particular agreement, but I do understand that you had some angst for that.
Well, under the engagement letter, just paragraph 15, let me read it to you, and you'll understand why I don't like it. This agreement and any dispute between client and appraiser shall be governed by the law of the state in which the appraiser's office as specified in this agreement is located. Exclusive of that state's choice of law rules. Client and appraiser agree that any legal proceeding brought by either party can interpret or enforce this agreement or to enforce an arbitration award entered pursuant to this agreement shall be brought in a state or federal court, having jurisdiction over the location of appraiser's office as specified in this agreement, and the parties here by way of any objections to personal jurisdiction or venue of said court. Now, this appraisal, people, I believe they are in Florida, I believe it's Florida, isn't it not?
I believe so.
Well, it says Florida State Certified and Georgia State Certified appraisal.
Yeah, they're on Thomasville Road in Tallahassee.
Yeah, so that's a, you know, but the other part of it, I I don't like it. But the problem is, of course, this is a different than if we got somebody to appraise your house or to praise your, you know, your vacant lot or something like that, that you, that you get when you, you know, you mortgage your property to the bank. They're specialized, but this is even a more specialized. So in fact, and you know, I don't like arbitration either, because you're waiving your right to go to court if you have a problem. Don't think there's gonna be any problem, but I would say that if they want the job, then they would change a little bit of paragraph number 15, that jurisdiction of any dispute would be exclusively in state court in Taylor County Florida.
So if we ask them to change that paragraph, and they respectfully decline, do you have, what, what is your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation would be to look for someone else. Is this time sensitive?
Yes, sir, it is.
Time sensitive, that's another thing.
It's very time sensitive.
Twenty says within 15 days of the date on the first sheet, I believe, if I read that right.
Well, the part that's time sensitive about this is that we do have a willing seller's statement that, that expires. Oh, Melody, is that the end of December?
Yeah.
The end of December, so.
I was gonna take you, appraise 3.95 acres. Come on.
That appraisal is.
Well, we'll have to get the, the appraisal, and then we'll have to make a decision, I mean, we'll have to see how that, how the price comes in. And so the concern is, we just don't want to wait any longer than we have to, but I understand your concerns.
Well, you know.
Well, and if it's a 4,500 dollar contract, and I, I don't, I'm sure Mr. Conrad is right, but the consortium's legal counsel approved it, I would, and it's 100% grant funded, would we not be safe?
Well, here's the, here's, here's the reason I'm saying what I'm saying is because I don't want somebody coming back and I start spouting off about venue, and they say, well, Mr. Bishop, you agreed to venue with this particular instance, why, you know, that's why I asked if it was time sensitive, you know, I always try to look at the big picture with regard to this, but, you know, to me, they must have had some problems, you know, of getting in trouble, or they wouldn't have this, this, this agreement like it is. Do you understand what I'm saying, LaWanda? You know, I mean, this is a highly
One-sided, I think you call it.
Yes, a highly one-sided thing, plus the fact is that, you know, the agreement that we've got with the consortium, remember that was really something, you remember we talking about that agreement? That was, you know, it took a Philadelphia lawyer a long time to read it. Really, serious.
Well, so we, we really have two choices, I mean, we can go back to this group and ask them if they'll consider changing their language. And then at that point, I mean, I, I would ask the board if we can work with our legal counsel to come up with the best solution, I mean, we have a quote from another group that is higher.
How much?
Melody, do you know how much higher it is?
But they make sense, same kind of.
Well, they may.
It was, it was a couple thousand more, and then the minority, the other minority quote we were wanting to get was a no quote. And we worked off of, there is no one in Taylor County, so we worked off of Leon County's approval list. It's where we got the name to solicit.
Here's what I suggest.
For, for quotes.
Here's what my suggestion to say to them, and saying that we would respectfully request you change that that venue be exclusively in state court in Taylor County. You know, if they need the language, you know, I can give it to you, that's, that's what it is, because we respectfully, and if they, you know, if they hiccup on it, then at the very next meeting of our board, which is very short, you know, y'all can decide whether you want to approve it or not.
Commissioner, I'll do, so I'll rescind my, my motion, and I'll make a new motion that we move forward and include the language that he just described. That's my motion, you know, we'll see where it goes.
We have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
One question before we vote, is that gonna be an issue with this 15-day requirement for expiration? Number 20 speaks to this agreement.
I only need binding if it's signed by both parties within 15 days.
When did that start?
It started July 20th, I'm assuming it's working business days, but that's, that's stipulated. So if we, if we wait to that point.
That'd be too long.
It would be, I think it would be outside the 15 days.
Well, and they can send us a new, an updated agreement if they, if they agree.
I mean, if we're gonna have that.
Then we would need a new, we would need an
Look at their requirements.
Yes, we would need a letter from them.
And I agree, that's, that's a good point, but my gosh, you know, who's paying for this?
Back there.
These people telling us how we're gonna do stuff?
Well, I think if we can agree to the date, maybe updating the date.
Yeah, surely.
I don't think, I don't know why that would be an issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Really, to tell you the truth, in my experience, when I've raised this, the only time that it's really a question where they won't do it is when we're doing a grant with the state. They will not go out of Leon County, I don't care what you do, you could, you could you could pull them a six mules, and you couldn't get them out of Leon County. Not so I have, took too long, I'm done. We have a motion, and a second, all in favor? Number 20, the Board to Consider Approval of Ranking List of Approved Participants of the State Department of Economic Opportunity Small Cities Community Development Blocks Grant for Housing Rehabilitation, intended by Grant Driver. Melody?
Yes, there have been six people we would like to move forward with on the CDVG housing grant. So we can move forward with either a rehab or demo and reconstruction of their homes. There is a required rating system based on income, if you're disabled, if you're considered elderly, and that is what is used for the ranking. So we're requesting approval to move forward with this list of individuals. And I do want to reiterate our blessing plan, we all know, is we had a, is on the list, but she followed all the proper steps that were required in the application.
And this just for county residents only?
It is for county residents that live outside the city limits of Perry.
There's no discussion?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Number one, the Board to Consider Approval of Perry-Foley Airport Design and Rehab, RZV, 1230, Lining and Signing Amendment to Grant Agreement for Financial Management Project Number 446760, that's one, that's five four, that's two four, and authorizing resolutions, intended by the Grant Driver.
This, this is to increase the original grant amount that we received from 3,250,000, $3,210 to 3,525,321 dollars. We knew when we received the original grant agreement that we would need additional funding. However, at the time, FDOT did not have the funding available. As of July 1 of this year, they did have the funding available, the award grant was increased by additional $500,000 so that we would be able to fully fund the project. There is no match from the county, we requested a rural economic development initiative waiver, and they received it.
And that is for the same intended section of the runway, right?
This is for the rehabilitation of runway 1230, which has to be funded by FDOT unless the county funds it itself, because since it's our secondary runway, it is not eligible for FAA funding. Runway 1836 is the only runway that's eligible for FAA assistance.
All right. Another question, I'll take a motion to approve.
A motion to read the resolution, but come along.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, we're in a position, but all in favor? Whereas the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners and State Department of Transportation have determined it to be in their mutual interest to facilitate the development of the herein described project at the Perry-Foley Airport, two west.
Motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, and a second, all in favor?
And there was there's a grant agreement as well.
We have a motion to approve the grant agreement?
I move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, all in favor? All right. Point two, the Board to Consider Approval of Florida Department of Transportation Public Transportation Grant Agreement for Financial Project Number 441953, that's two, that's nine
dash two dash nine-four, that's two-four, an authorizing resolution for the Perry-Foley Airport Design and Construction of High Mass Lots in the airport area, presented by the Grant Driver.
As y'all know, we approved an F A A grant in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars for the high mass wide design only portion of the project. We were waiting for the additional five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for that project, so it would be fully funded, fully grant funded. In addition, while F D O T has the funding available, they included the additional amount, which is our thirty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, for the actual construction of the high mass wide, once the design is complete. So at this point, we will only have to wait for the F A A funding for the actual construction once the design is complete.
What a resolution, do we have a motion to read the resolution?
I'll move.
I'll tie along again. Have a motion to read the resolution, I'll tie along, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Whereas Taylor County Board of County Commissioners and State Department of Transportation, F D O T, have determined it be in their mutual interest to facilitate the development of the hearing described project at the Perry-Foley Airport, two west.
We have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move.
Motion to approve the resolution, we have a second? Second, all in favor? Financial agreement, do we have a motion to approve the financial agreement?
Move.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we discussed point three. We want to turn it forward. The Board discussed board of room acoustic, presented by...
There have been some requests to further evaluate ways to improve the audio in the boardroom, um, and we have tried to work with the existing system, and really just have not been able to come up with a good solution. So we, um, explored another way to help with the audio system in the boardroom, and we did receive a quote, we've been working with a local contractor, and this would be the addition of microphones, which would be the drop-down microphones, but we would recycle the microphones that we already have in here, and adding some speakers and a mixer to the boardroom. We believe the cost of the equipment will be around six thousand dollars. We will search to see if we can find the money within our budget, if that's what the Board needs to do. We also need to explore adding some acoustic baffles. That's, that's a big problem, is the way this room is built. Um, we need something to kind of temper the way the sound bounces around the room, um, and so we'll explore that as well. I just wanted to bring this up to the Board to see if you wish to move forward with procuring some additional equipment, to see if we can improve the, the sound quality.
Now, are we, is this for the citizens, they get to speak, or just the citizens in their own, or?
Well, if you recall, several months ago, there, I mean, we've had citizens within the last, I mean, it's just several months ago, probably, at this point, but occasionally, depending on where they sit, they complain that they cannot hear well, and these, these microphones aren't hooked up to anything. Um, when we had this system installed, um, the, that was primarily to improve, um, public participation during COVID, and to improve the sound quality for our recorded meetings, but I think we're still, we still have the same issue, that if, if somebody doesn't speak loudly, or may not be facing the audience, that there have been some folks who have complained that they cannot hear, and we've even moved them to the front row, thinking that they would be able to hear better.
Motion to move forward with, um, improving the acoustics?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second to enhance the room acoustics, all in favor?
If I cannot locate the funding within the budget, I will come back to the Board at the next meeting and ask for a budget transfer, but we're going to, um, try to see what we can fund to, to improve this just as soon as we can, understanding that this is a two, this is still two stages we need to go through. We need to get the equipment, have it installed, and then we need to look at the, the baffles to help with that. Okay?
All right. Dan, I'm sure you still have the rational...
The only item I have for you is just to make the Board aware that it is time for open enrollment for insurance benefits. The open enrollment dates are August seventh through twenty-fifth. There is an onsite, one-day-only event on Monday, the fourteenth, and, um, that will be from ten to, well, it will start at the road department from seven fifteen A M. to nine o'clock A M. F R S will not be available at that location during the time, from ten to one at Forest Capital Hall, and then from two-thirty to seven-thirty back at Forest Capital Hall. So representatives from Aflac, F R S, Liberty National, Nationwide Retirement will all be available to speak. You should all have flyers in your mailboxes. Also, there is an online enrollment system that is available now. You will also have this letter in your mailbox, um, that explains the process to you, so you don't have to, you don't have to go to Forest Capital Hall or to Auburn, and you can use the online system. So I just wanted to make sure that y'all all knew that this, it's that time of year for open enrollment, and if you wish to make any changes, now's the time to make it.
Got it.
Okay? Thank you.
I see, commenting concern for the public for non-agenda. Anyone? All right. Your information allows, Mr. Bishop, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna share a story with y'all. I was, we were in Cody, and this is to show you one small world we live in. We were in Cody, Wyoming, and about two o'clock that night, we decided that we were gonna go to Loveless Barbecue, because it had been recommended. So we get there, and we have to wait about fifteen or twenty minutes to get a table. Place was full, so finally, when it was our time, the waiter led us around and back over here, and as we were going to our table, there was a table right here with four people sitting there. I looked at that man, and I'm thinking, hmm, he sure does look like somebody I know. And so we all went and sat down, and I looked back over there again, and I said, well, that woman there sure looks like somebody I know. And so about that time, I said, I'm gonna go over there. It can't be that I'm gonna go there. So I went over there, and it was your mama's aunt, and your aunt, and her husband from St. Chris.
You want me to show everyone the picture they took of him?
No. And I was like, I cannot believe it.
Oh, you know, and you run into those folks, and here you're regging out around the back, and you're fifteen, a hundred miles up there, it's like, that can't be.
Yeah, and your daddy looked at me, and we both looked at each other like, no, you know, why? But then when I saw Bonnie, and your mom, and I looked back at him, and I'm like, oh my God.
Well, they were talking about Gordon, and I told them, I just mentioned, I knew you had mentioned you were Gordon, and I said, well, Commissioner Feig was going up there somewhere, didn't even know, didn't have no idea, y'all running each other, which I did.
So we, you know, we talked, and then, um, I don't know if it was Bonnie or your mom, they came over and said, here, Tom, that's Dad, Pat Walker.
Oh, yeah.
And she said, what are you doing? I said, I'm sitting here in the restaurant with your kinfolk, they're coming wild. I can't believe it.
It is, for sure.
Be careful what you do when you're on vacation.
That's right.
Night has a thousand eyes.
Now, I wanna, wanna add one more thing, too. COVID is on the rise. Um, I had COVID, I had a really bad case of it, and, um, they say it's on the rise, it's a different, um, um, mutation, and, um, just be careful, that's all I can say, just be careful. That's all I've got.
Commissioner? Commissioner?
I can't tell that story.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
I think you better have answers.
My name is...